In addition to letting you know what the board is about, we wanted to have a librarian come and share part of the why behind applying for this and what significance does that have? What impact does it have on libraries? And so Stephanie Haig is going to come up here and share with you a little bit about her experience.
Lower that a little bit. Good evening, everyone. I am Stephanie Haig and I'm the librarian at Terry Redlin. And thank you for recognizing our school library and the achievement that we were awarded here. It's really an honor to be a part of a community that really values the impact of our school libraries. To share a little bit about Terry Redlin, it is our mission in our library to create a community that fosters a love of reading and learning within our educational and nurturing environment. A little bit about this past year, we were able to facilitate many engaging programs that cultivated that love of reading across our school. Our One Book, One School initiative was a huge success, especially for a first-time event. It brought together our school community and shared a story and a shared experience with our building. We also created literacy events like the Read Across America, book fairs, summer reading incentives, and the ever-popular book swap. Book tastings introduced students to new genres, and the book vending machine added a little fun and interactive way to reward our readers who demonstrated outstanding behavior. We're especially grateful for the Book a Month program from Promising Futures, which helps to give high-quality books directly to our students each month. But reading isn't all that we do. Our students are diving into hands-on STEM activities in the library, building, experimenting, and solving real-world problems in a way that sparks their curiosity. None of this is possible without our partnerships that we built with our classroom teachers, our administration, our community, the foundation, and all of our volunteers. And we appreciate the Sioux Falls School District and your support of our schools as we continue to build our lifelong learners and readers. And we are truly grateful.
Before your comments, I will share with you that we've created a seal. Actually, the seal is from the state, but we put it on a vinyl cling. So we'll be providing one to each of our schools so that on a window they can, or on a board somewhere, they can proudly showcase that they are a Saddle Award Library for 2025 through 2028.
That is outstanding. Thank you. Three things that Mrs. Haig didn't get a chance to share, but while she was at John Harris, I remember it being a big deal. Number one, to help you put books away. Number two, when your dog would come along with you to help with the reading. And then number three, the gingerbread house displays that were throughout the library. And not only did they smell good and look good, but I'm sure in the imagination of the children, it just opened up a lot of avenues. So the library was definitely an integral part of John Harris. And I'm sure the others of you that are here have equally important stories to tell about your particular buildings and are so deserving of the recognition and the awards that you have been given tonight. And we're just really proud of the libraries, our librarians, and what it stands for for students and their love of reading and continued education.
Any other thoughts?
Gail. So we had our first meeting of the year today of our retired school personnel. And my little bird walk will be, and Dr. Knoll did a fantastic presentation. But back to librarians. And so afterwards, talking to some other teachers, retired teachers, and we were just talking about the school year and how great it was going. And this one retired teacher is a grandma. And she was talking about after the first week of school, they had a family doings. And she has three grandchildren in the school district. And the nine-year-old was just bursting at the seams to tell Grandma about school. He goes, Grandma, 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 I have a favorite teacher. I have the best teacher in the world. I have a favorite teacher. Oh, who is that? My librarian. I thought that was cool. Well done.
Thank you, Gail. And thanks again, and congratulations.
Okay, can I please get an approval of the minutes of the meeting held 9/8/2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. We do not have any persons wishing to address the school board on non-agenda items, or persons wishing to address the board on agenda items. We will move to approve the agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda passes. Any conflicts of interest? No. May I please have an approval of the consent agenda items, items A through G?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Dr. Knoll, we have some reports of the superintendent.
We will start this evening off with Dr. Zeke presenting the post-secondary report. And this is really a pivotal piece of information for us because it helps us to see what our students are doing beyond high school, the post-secondary routes that they take. And so we look at this and analyze some of the data there to see what programming we can incorporate into our district to truly help our students see themselves in a secondary setting. So Dr. Zeke will present that for us.
Thank you, Dr. Knoll. Yes, this is a brief report, but very important as we educate our students and then send them off after they're with us. So the first slide is an overview. It's not our district's data, but what it is, is an overview of what is needed for positions out there as students then either graduate from high school and go right into the workforce, or go to technical college, or military, or two-year, four-year university. And you can see by this slide that it's 1983, 2021, and then projecting into 2031. And I think what's most important here is that 42% of the jobs in 2031 are predicted to at least have a bachelor's degree as compared to 19% in 1983. The 1980s, if you remember, were more of an agronomy society, and we had a lot of jobs that would take those skills. But now we need higher level of skills, and we need workers to have more preparation. So as that would continue to grow, and we need those specialized positions, we look to our students, the percentage of students enrolled in college any one time during the first year. You can see we have an average over these years of right around 59%. Where are these students going? A high percentage of our students who graduate in the Sioux Falls, from the Sioux Falls School District, go to South Dakota State and the University of South Dakota. Then from there, Southeast Technical College, right here in Sioux Falls, then Augie, USF, Dakota State University, University of Nebraska, the Huskers, I guess some of that out of state. Then we get University of Minnesota, South Dakota School of Mines. And rounding off, the top 10 is Minnesota State University at Mankato. And you can see the numbers on the right-hand side. Now, this slide is very interesting and a little confusing. I'll do my best to explain it. If you think about this, plant this in your mind, the class of 2017, long ago. So we're going to track them over the next six years past 2017. Right about 60% of the students entered some form of post-secondary school, technical college, a two-year institution, or a four-year institution. And looks like about 39% then were not reported. That means they could have went right into the workforce, been an apprentice, or asked to not have their data brought forward by the National Clearinghouse. So they go in in their first year. What happens in their second year? Well, you can see that if you're in orange, you continued on for your second year of that university life or that post-secondary. If you're in green, maybe you took a gap year, and now you're going to enter the workforce. Now, it looks like about 4.5%. If you are in the maroon at the bottom, about 4% then may have went to a two-year institution and graduated in that second year, or maybe they loaded up on a lot of dual-credit courses and were able to graduate really fast. If you were in yellow, moving along that little stream, now you have found something else. Maybe college wasn't for you, and you just took a break. Maybe you needed a gap year in your second year. And then, of course, that purple stream across the top is just not reported. In the third year, then we see that some more students graduate, maybe some more thought college might be after two gap years. Then orange persists. Now blue is returning after they stopped. So maybe they were in their first year, they took a gap year their second year, and the little blue sliver is, well, I need to get back in and go back into the university. And then you can see how that progresses all the way through when you have about at the end, 43, 44% of the students graduating. I'm going to give you probably the final report on the NCRC because this assessment, the National Career Readiness Certificate, it will no longer be given in the Sioux Falls School District. Last year was the final year. So this is the report. About 89% achieved a bronze or higher. If you look at bronze, silver, gold, and platinum, you can think about them this way. Bronze is the fundamental level of readiness. So when you think about that, what career occupation would their skills be good for? We're looking at repair or customer service. If you look at a silver certificate, that means you're ready to handle more complex tasks. And we're looking at administrative support, manufacturing, or healthcare. The gold certificate, you have strong foundational skills. You have a wide range of jobs like supervisory, or technical, or finance. And then finally, platinum, the highest level, is exceptional workplace skills. And you're looking there at engineering, or information tech, or finance. So this assessment shows what kind of readiness that you have for our seniors going into the workforce, and gives them a certificate then that they could show their employers. And with that, I conclude the post-secondary report of where our students go after college, or after high school. And I would like you to acknowledge the 2025 post-secondary report. I stand by for questions or comments.
I have some questions. Well, first of all, thank you for compiling these numbers. And I'm just curious if you could please share how this data helps to inform the decisions, informs our decisions with respect to our curriculum and our programs, for example? How might these projections guide us with dual-credit, CTE, or our internships?
Sure. When we get this data, and we look to the conversations that we have with our post-secondary institutions like Southeast Technical College, or USD, or SDSU, Dakota State, and the other universities, which we're trying to find out, what is it that we can prepare our students for, for their universities? And AI has been a hot topic of late, as is dual credit and what offerings we have, so that we can give those to prepare students in the pathway. For, let's say, Southeast Tech, what are they seeing as far in enrollment? And what are the interests of students? So we want to be able to prepare them, and then backload any kind of courses that we can put in. And as we have curriculum studies, what does that look like at the high school level?
Can you clarify something for me? The NCRC, is that something that we're choosing not to continue, or is it no longer going to be an offered test?
Great question. Yes. And 2018, about 2019, the state came out with the initiative that we would, they would really offer it and pay for it through the Department of Labor. And we took advantage of that. And then now they are no longer going to do that moving forward. So we chose not to follow that going into this year.
Just looking at the numbers for where kids are going a lot, going to USD and SDSU, do you know the reasons why they choose those schools? Is it scholarships? Is it the programs? Is it, you know, how do we feed into those universities?
Well, I don't specifically have the information of why they choose those schools. But I do know that with Dr. Knoll and Mr. Conrad, we are meeting with students at the high schools throughout the school year. And that may be something that we ask them as far as when they choose universities. Why are they choosing universities? And those two are the two major universities, have the most students. So I would assume that the highest percentage would flow into those. They have a large range in offerings of programs as well, state programs.
What supports are proving most useful in getting those first-generation students to go into a post-secondary situation, specifically I've been in Promising Future and some of those initiatives with the partnerships that we have in our community?
Well, I'm glad you asked. Yes, we have the pilot going on at Jefferson this year with the College and Career Access Councilors. And we also have all of our counselors that work hard to get students to where they need. And middle school, too. When we're looking at career and technical classes and the CTE, everybody's really working hard to find out what are the interests of our students, and what can we offer them? And as, again, we meet with them, we're asking them, what are your interests, and what kind of courses can we provide? Especially in the world of AI now, where I know we have two meetings coming up with two universities to talk about, what are you offering for your college students, and what can we do to help support our students coming out?
Yeah, I'm wondering how I should ask this question. But I'm just kind of curious, when you talk about you ask kids, you know, what their interests are. Is that more of, you know, what specific career fields are you interested in, or what type of work, or what subjects? How do you really get to what kid? You know, a lot of students aren't going to know necessarily what type of career they want, but they might know that they want to work outdoors, or they want to work in an office, or they want to work from home. You know, how do you kind of help? And maybe this isn't the right...
No, this is the right place. Okay, so let me talk about that. So we have two new initiatives coming on board this year that, one is the Para Apprenticeship Program, where students who are juniors or seniors can earn a wage while in the school day or in summer. And the Para- And the Para is really finding out, do we have teachers out there who have an interest in that? So with the Teacher Program, Pathway Program that we already have, they can earn their credential. And I can also get a taste of it. We also have a second one, the Cyber Apprenticeship Program, where perhaps they'll work with our BCSs or they're working in industry around the city. And they, again, they can earn a wage and then get a credential. And they'll also take classes at the CTE. So we're trying to, through that and by asking, just generally, where are you going? And a lot of kids know where they're going and what they're going to do with their seniors. But how can we even ask juniors and sophomores? I always say my dad is, dad's in his mid-70s and he still doesn't know what he wants to do. But we got to try to find ways and we should be open to the pathways. And like with Marcela LeBeau, we're starting with our, with our, with our lab there. And we're just opening up exploration for kids. And hopefully, if they have a niche or they'd really like to do something, we can continue to offer programming.
Go ahead, Marie.
When I was at Joe Foss, we had this, it was like a test that you could take to kind of line you up with a potential career that you would be interested in. And then if you further went into those careers, it would match you up with a college or technical institute. Is that still functioning or was that a Department of Labor thing?
I would have to lean on my experts for that. I haven't.
That is still functioning. It was South Dakota My Life. They start in the middle schools. And they truly start to work through that process in the middle schools to analyze where would their interest inventory be? And then they start to align that eventually with the career exploration. And so they do go through to see what courses would line up with that. And a lot of those introductory-type courses are found at the home high schools. They take more in-depth courses out at the CTE Academy if they choose to, as far as some of our expanded coursework goes. But the South Dakota My Life is where we really put a lot of that emphasis into. And it begins in that middle school level to be able to do that. You'd asked also about those first-time generational college students. And to be able to help them, the Trio Program has been one that comes in from USD and SDSU to help first-time students, first-time family students to be able to go to college setting. And we're seeing if we can capitalize on that even a little bit further with the College and Career Access Program. So I think that'll help to have some of those individuals see, how can I get to a college setting? And actually, more importantly, probably take a lot of those college credits, dual credits. And AP class has been a big thing for the Sioux Falls School District. But dual-credit is something that they can also transfer to Most All. And a lot of that pilot has started at Jefferson as well, where they, they lined up their courses with Southeast Technical College, so they can do a lot of the dual-credit to be able to get that taken. So before they even get to Southeast Tech, they've got some of their coursework already completed. But they start that process really in the middle school. And that can be a report that we do either at a work session or one of the board reports to look at that career exploration process with the middle school all the way through. Kim Sharping would be a great expert to be able to give us information on that.
And also, so we look at the data, when we look at the data come across about kids and what, what classes they're participating in. I think that was a generation of, well, what about Ag in Sioux Falls? And you think we're pretty urban, but what can we do for all of the opportunities that are there? And I think the last time that I looked, it was somewhere around in the 70s or 80s. But that's a marker that we're going to really look at with the new barn that's going up at CTE. And how can we expand that for students who are interested?
And we're definitely connected with Ag. It might seem urban, but most of our industry has such a strong.
Right, everything outside of town is Ag-related.
Yeah, yeah, good connection. Okay, can I please get a motion to acknowledge the post-secondary report? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you.
Our second report this evening comes with the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation. And Allison Struck will give that report. I would tell you, this foundation is truly fills the gaps in so many ways. When we talk about the, the costs per se with new teachers and helping them to start out in their classrooms to the Public School Proud Grants that are issued out to our staff who can come up with innovative ideas to maybe excite kids into a new career or to be excited about the course that they're currently taking. But truly fills in those gaps financially so that teachers can do more with what they have. And so we will hear from Allison Struck on the Sioux Falls Public School Education Foundation.
Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity tonight to share all the good things that are happening at the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation. As you can see, we have three focus areas, Curriculum Enhancements, Talent and Recognition, and Student Success. I will start by highlighting Curriculum Enhancements. Under this umbrella, we have three grant programs for educators. Public School Proud Grants, First-Time Teacher Grants, and Replenish the Room Grants. We are probably most well-known for our Public School Proud Grants. Any teacher in the district can apply for up to $10,000 to purchase materials that will give students hands-on immersive opportunities. In the spring of 2025, we awarded $189,000 through this program. This was a record amount for the Education Foundation, due in part to the $100,000 gift from the Winker family. They made a donation to support arts programming throughout the district, and every art teacher who applied received funding. These art teachers purchased modeling clay, pottery wheels, acrylic, tempera and watercolor paint sets, looms, weaving materials, printmaking tools, 3D printers, marvelling trays, and more. This photo shows members of the Winker family with the art teacher from Robert Frost. Greg, Ted, and Jenny Winker came back to Sioux Falls in April, and we visited four schools to surprise teachers in their art classrooms. At Robert Frost, they were able to tour the student art show, and we were all blown away by the talent. In addition to the art grants, the Education Foundation funded STEM materials, aerogardens, and hydroponics kits, task boxes for students with autism, programmable robots, socially-emotional learning materials, specialized PE equipment for students with limited mobility, an EMT mask casualty kit, musical instruments, and more. The application for the 2025-2026 school year will open October 1st. About a month ago, the Education Foundation awarded 67 first-time teacher grants. All first-time, first-year educators received a $250 stipend to purchase supplies for their first classrooms. New this year, the Education Foundation Board increased this grant award from $200 to $250. Since we started this program in 2011, we have awarded more than 1,100 of these grants. These awards are a fantastic way to welcome new staff, not only to the district, but also to Sioux Falls and to show them that we're invested in their success. Our newest program is the Replenish the Room Grant. We started this program last year after we held focus groups and listening sessions with numerous district staff members. One of the things we heard time and again was that all educators, not just new teachers, are spending a lot of money out of their own pocket to purchase supplies for their classrooms. Any teacher who has taught for two or more years was eligible to apply for this grant. And a few weeks ago, we awarded 150 Replenish the Room Grants for a total of almost $40,000. Teachers have used these funds to purchase sets of books, headphones, flexible seating, math manipulatives, literacy kits, organization tools, and more. This is just a stack of some of the thank you cards I have received. One of the teachers wrote in her card that not only did the $250 make her day, it made her entire year. Three teachers have told me that it felt like Christmas when all of their supplies arrived in school. One of the teachers kept sending me pictures like, oh, more stuff came today. Oh, here's another picture with, I forgot I had ordered this. And then this is a five-page document of just the comments I have received from teachers and administrators after we announced those replenish-the-room grants. As you can see, here are some of the comments that I pulled off the sheet. But I keep the cards, you know, it just, it reminds us why we do the work that we do and how a small $250 gift can make a difference for a teacher, especially this time of year when everyone's coming back and when students come in, there may be some needs that you didn't know. You know, you, you might be looking for something that you didn't anticipate. And so that $250 really helps them out. So moving on from Curriculum Enhancements, Talent and Recognition is our second focus area. The Education Foundation Board of Directors has been intentional about expanding our efforts in this area because we want to continue to attract and retain the best and the brightest. Every fall, we deliver treats to each school. Last week, I was able to visit four. And this morning, I started my week at the community campus at Western Mall. We also give 14 low-income schools $5,000 each to use for staff appreciation activities. Forest Man has already hosted a back-to-school lunch. And McGovern, Terry Redlin, and Annie Sullivan have had a coffee food truck onsite for their staff. A number of our schools will use part of this $5,000 to purchase spiritware for their team members. In addition, we celebrate the district's longest-tenured teacher. Three years ago, it was Sue Bills from Whittier Middle School. Last year and this year, we've celebrated Jane Ilertson at Garfield Elementary. Jane is in her 43rd year with the district, and she's a kindergarten teacher. Straight to heaven, I mean, 43 years, woo! I was able to visit Garfield last week, and I brought crumble cookies for their staff in honor of Jane. So if you have not visited with her, she has some pretty crazy stories about how teaching has changed, you know, just over 43 years in the classroom. At the Teacher of the Year event, we give a cash prize to the finalists. At the district's annual recognition and retirement banquet, there are two honorees who each receive a $500 stipend. And then during Teacher Appreciation Week, we distribute cupcakes to teachers who have been nominated for going above and beyond. Under the Talent and Recognition focus area, the education also provides funding for each school to engage in mental wellness activities. In the fall and in the spring, every building can apply for funding to do an activity that promotes mental wellness, team building, and natural collaboration. This past weekend, one of our schools went to a flower farm and they did a gardening activity. A couple of weeks ago, another one of our buildings went and did goat yoga. A number of our schools have already signed up for art classes. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. We support these activities with private dollars. Although this is a relatively new focus area, we have raised almost half a million dollars to support staff appreciation efforts throughout the district. Our third pillar is student success. Through this fund, we try to bridge the gap for students in need and to fund projects that highlight student achievement. Initially, we started this program when we found out that nine social workers were sharing $500 amongst themselves. We have since raised more than $400,000 to support this fund. We partner with social workers and counselors, and they have funds available to purchase basic needs and personal hygiene products for students in crisis. In August, we gave 16 schools $350 each to purchase items to stack their supply closets. We cover the dual-credit cost for students enrolled in the Teacher Pathway Program during the second semester. And in a few weeks, we are sponsoring three buses to take high school students up to a national college fair in Minneapolis. We have also used this fund to purchase car seats and booster seats for our attendance liaisons and others who are transporting our students to and from school. For the last several years, we have sponsored the Native American Open House Event in August, the Winter Solstice in December, and the Honoring Ceremony in late April, early May. Last year, we dedicated funds to purchase Coda the Warrior comic books. With the new junior kindergarten program, we provided funds for those teachers to purchase age-appropriate materials for our new youngest learners. In February, we partnered with Amazon to distribute $15,000 worth of new hoodies, hats, and gloves to students at McGovern Middle School. And we have another distribution with Amazon planned for later this month. In the past, we have purchased washer and dryer sets for our elementary schools, and we have sponsored shoe vouchers through this program. In addition to our three focus areas, we have an endowment that is managed by the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. When I started, the balance was $100,000. This summer, we received a generous $190,000 gift, which has pushed us over the $1 million mark for our endowment. Sue Scribner was a longtime Sioux Falls School District employee. And when she passed away, the Education Foundation was named the beneficiary of her endowment. Every year, we receive a check from that account, and we use it to support language arts curriculum improvements per her wishes. Lastly, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the Education Foundation Board of Directors, some of whom are here tonight. Nan serves as the School Board Representative and Education Foundation Board Member. Dr. Zeke reads hundreds of pages of grant applications every year to make sure they align with curriculum and content standards. And Carrie Aaron is the Vice Chair of our Board. Retired teacher and administrator, 43 years in the Sioux Falls School District. She helps me tremendously. She's my right-hand woman when we're double and triple booked. Carrie has just been an incredible asset. So we are able to support students and teachers at every site because of our board's effort. I love my job, and it's because I get to work with just the best people. So we are proud to partner with the district. We've issued almost $100,000 in checks just the last month alone. And we're looking forward to a great start to the school year. Thank you.
I'm going to first get a motion to acknowledge your report, and then we're going to open up for a few questions. So if you just stay by.
Sounds good.
Standby. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the report?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, go ahead. We'd like to open up for some questions. First, I just want to point out that Deanne is with us, and she can remember when this was a volunteer position and the transformation it's really taken and the work involved with getting it to be a full-time executive director. And she's doing great. We're so lucky to have her. And to all the donors that have given to allow us to do all these great things, we're really thankful for a giving community that supports public education, most definitely. Any questions?
For sure. So if you want to actually enjoy your social media feed, follow the Education Foundation page. When I open that up and I see countless amounts of surprises and fun opportunities for staff smiling, like, I am so grateful for what you and your team do because I know it makes a difference in a world that we do get bogged down constantly and getting hit this way, that way, and just the narrative around schools. You need a good pick-me-up. Follow not only the foundation, but Allison, because she lives and breathes her work. Most people separate themselves, but on her LinkedIn, I tell you what. She's so excited to share her work, she's proud of what she does, and she works really hard. So I'm just beyond grateful for you and for you to be here. Thank you so much. And everybody who serves, Dr. Zeke reading, good job with your reading skills. So again, just bow down to you. Thank you, thank you, on behalf of so many of us. Your work matters.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Nan's probably going to say this, but I'm going to say it first. If you want to donate.
Oh, yeah, I would say that.
I would. Where do we direct people who would like to contribute to this very worthy cause?
Yeah, so we have an online donation tool. You can also write a check and send it to, you know, here at IPC or to our P.O. Box. We have a QR code that we can send out. All the information is readily available on our website and social media pages.
It would be very useful, as she goes out and fundraises, to say we have 100% board giving towards the foundation, given the strategic initiatives that it helps to support for the district. So we're glad to collect checks, even tonight, for anybody. Right, Allison?
Anytime.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all right. So we're going to take a vote to acknowledge, thank you again, to acknowledge the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation update.
So moved.
We already do, we're just taking a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And so when I said earlier that they fill the gap, obviously, you can see by the things that they do, they do so much more than just fill in the gap. And so we're greatly appreciative of the work they do. Our third report here is with child nutrition. And Gaye Anderson, Gaye has been a great addition to the Sioux Falls School District. She has been here several years now, but a great addition to the Sioux Falls School District. And the work and passion that she's put into child nutrition to bring it up to date in so many ways and to make sure the food that we serve to our kids is high-quality food that not only meets very difficult standards for the nation, and some of those things have been put in there that does make it more difficult in being able to meet some of those things. She and her group does an incredible job, and then they look for new ways to be able to help to make things even better. And so when we're feeding well over 15,000, I tell people and they talk about snow days is there's so many kids that truly rely on the breakfast and the lunch that they get each day because that is the quality food that they get each day that we know that they're taken care of. And so we don't take it lightly when we cancel a day of school because we know that there's going to be a lot of kids that will not have somebody with them. And the food that they eat also worries us. And so we know they come to a safe place and have a very good nutritious meal. So Gaye Anderson.
Okay, thank you for having me. And also, when school is canceled, we usually want to be the first ones notified before we start cooking food. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the different things that we've been going through this year, bringing you up to date on some changes coming up legislatively down the path. But starting it out by breakfast and. But starting it out by breakfast and lunch really are the key parts of the school day. I fully believe that we prepare our students to learn when they are able to have healthy nutritious meals. We will continue on focusing and providing those healthy options, meeting all aspects of our meal pattern requirements by USDA. And I'm proud to say that as those meal patterns change, I've got a sample of what the current meal pattern looks like. As those change, we are on target each time in making sure we're fully compliant with all regulations. We started, this year we had to shift, cutting back on sodium a bit more. Added sugars have become a new piece of what we're doing and so we're in the first year of that being phased in. And also just meeting all those different calorie and nutrition requirements. So I'm really happy that our team is able to stay on top of that and maintain that compliance there. What's kind of fun to talk about also is I think we're the largest restaurant in town. I have a few franchises here, you know, and we kind of look at it that. And it's kind of nice to be able to say that we know that what we do is making an impact on the kids and the school district itself. Also proud of what our health inspection scores are. We are inspected twice a year and in every location. And last year, our average score was 99.99. We had one little ding that wrecked that for the whole year. So we would have had a perfect score. And so it's really nice to know that we've got people who want to stay on top of all that. So to date, we're talking a little bit, I like to compare numbers. Where are we at in comparison already at the beginning of the school year? And this isn't using numbers based on last week, Monday, starting out the year. So we are up with our breakfast participation right now at about 3.85% for the school year over last year, serving about 4,700-plus breakfasts each day. I expect to see those numbers getting closer to 6,000 as we get into colder days. Elementary kids tend to start eating a little bit more with us as we move into that. And our lunches, we're up by about 1.8, 1.08%. We're currently doing about 15,237 lunches each day. And that doesn't include all the different snacks that we offer throughout the day for our early childhood programs and after-school programs along with that. Talking about this, realizing we had a slight decrease in enrollment this school year, I'm kind of happy to say that we are seeing some increases there. And I think some of that, we've been looking at some new additions on things that we can bring into offering the students. One of the big highlights already this year is I've never thought I could have a bacon cheeseburger on the menu, but we have bacon cheeseburgers on the menu. And the first time that was offered at our middle schools, high schools, kids were blown away by it. Our managers were calling saying we had record sales today, we had to make more burgers. So we found some bacon that works and made it all compliant so we fit in that sodium range there. It's fun to even come up with some different things we've done with replacing our garlic toast, which was a different kind of garlic toast. We found something that offers a little bit more in calories, still meeting those guidelines, and have soft, nice crispy garlic, not crispy, garlic knots that we offered. And those were actually served today too. And so they smell buildings up really nice, I think. So continuing on from something I shared with you last year about some of the changes we're making and moving forward with changing the quality of food within the school district. We had three schools that we worked on last year in a pilot program where we said, "All the hot food is going to be prepared at the secondary school." So we started at Washington and they prepared all the hot food for Annie Sullivan. In the middle of the school year, we added two other schools. We went to Edison Middle School, adding Laura Wilder, and Jefferson High School picked up Hayward. So then it was like, okay, we've gotta move forward. We've gotta, let's do some more. We've got some other locations that are closer. So this year, we've added Ben Rifle that prepares all the hot food for Rosa Parks. Lincoln High School is preparing food for Robert Frost. And George McGovern is preparing for Marcelo LeBeau. So it's kind of neat to be able to say we're pulling out these numbers of hot meals being prepared. When you're doing between 10,000 and 11,000 hot meals a day in a central facility, we're able to cook that food later in the morning and shift some of that so we can improve the quality from central facility. And the locations that are getting the food delivered from these six sites are also getting a much fresher food. And it's been really neat to see some of the changes there. So this doesn't only impact those six schools, it's impacting all of our elementary schools because I've actually worked our schedules backwards on our truck drivers as they're leaving for the elementary schools. I say, "Let's start, what's the last lunchtime?" We've correlated with all the different starting times for when elementary schools start lunch. And it's like, okay, now we're cooking for the truck driver's route. Instead of cooking all the hot food for the district, we're cooking for these three schools right now. So we can cook that closer to the time that they're leaving and having that shift also so the quality of the food is held or better along that way. So it's kind of been a process that we're going through. I think we're at a good point right now where we may be able to add maybe one or two more, depending how this goes. But some of our positive outcomes, it's exciting to share. Hot food is noticeably more appealing. And I was at Robert Frost, the second day of school, we had french fries on the menu. And this may sound like a minor thing, but french fries that get prepared, say maybe two hours earlier and are held in a hot box, their quality changes compared to having something that was just delivered half an hour before. And so people are saying things, we're getting comments about that. Our food temperatures are staying warmer. Employee pride. It's been fun to hear staff coming back saying, "Oh my gosh, the kids are actually noticing this." And seeing some of those things that they feel good about what they're doing. Again, it's impacting all the elementary schools. It's not just those six locations. We have pulled basically 2,800 hot meals each day coming out of central kitchen to make some of these changes. And then the next thing is we also see less waste because we're batch cooking closer to meal service. We get more accurate lunch counts in from the elementary schools. It's like we can shift and adjust some of those numbers before we actually cook the food. So that's kind of been fun to see those changes happening. A little bit about our free and reduced applications. That's always kind of a hot topic around this time of year. Over 5,000 families had applied for free and reduced meal benefits online or on paper as of last week. I did run a quick number this morning. It looks like we're at about 52, 50 that have applied now with applications. We have 69 that are pending that we just can't get anything done because we're missing information from families. We're trying to track them down. So that's kind of nice knowing that we've done a lot in that front end of things. What happens though, we have the 30-day grace period in our school year where families who were approved for free and reduced previously last year, they get the first 30 days of school where they qualify for free and reduced meals. If they do not reapply in that period of time, they will fall off the benefits. And so as of last week, Monday, we still had over 1,235 families that had not yet reapplied, impacting over 1,800 students. So we have a lot of work to do. Our 30th day is going to be October 3rd. And the numbers came down a little bit this week. I think we're probably at about 1,500 students right now that still need free and reduced application or hopefully, if they qualify, that their families complete that. Honestly, what we've been able to do with processing these applications, we have a ton of helpers. Different departments are amazing. Kim Sharping and her team. Indian Education has been helping us with lots of different things. Liaisons, the social workers, building administrators and all that. So along with all those many hands getting information for us and my great office team, I think it's really neat to be able to say we've accomplished a lot in getting these applications completed to the point we are right now. And we currently are sitting at 49.7% free and reduced. I think it's the highest that I've ever known the district has been at. That's gonna change again because we always know in October that will change. Excuse me. So I also have a chart up here that shows just basically what those income guidelines are. So it gives you an idea of that. And I'm going to shift a little bit because there is the last column there that we kind of use for Angel Fund totals. And I've got that number on my next slide here. I guess I probably want to add that we are still covering the cost of meals for reduced students too. This is our third year. So our Angel Fund update, I just used that Angel Fund Free column that I had on that other slide just to show you, we've got a shift in how we've been doing things. Back in August or so, Todd Veek, Deanne Conrad, myself, met with our largest donors, talked about some different things. We had some recommendations going forward on how do we handle the Angel Fund. And last year, what we were doing during the school year, we had three different criteria that after a family was denied from reduced or free meal benefits, we used a range of 185 to 200% of the free and reduced or of federal poverty guidelines, I should say, where that would go on shift. And our Angel Fund and donors were saying, "We're gonna cover those meals." So those are the families that just missed it by that much. And then we had two different ranges also in what we did. We had some matching funds. So we went from 200% of federal poverty guidelines to 215. And there is a one-to-three match. A parent would pay $1, we'd use $3 of Angel money to put towards that. And then once it hit the 215 to 230, we did a reverse of that match. For every $3 they put in, we put in $1 from the Angel Fund. That was a rather bit of a big administrative burden. And we wanted to figure that we could try and help more families by making the recommendation of going to increasing that 185 to 200%, up to 210% of federal poverty guidelines. So we're now actually helping more students and families where they're receiving free meals, as long as funding lasts. And so that is really encouraging to see. Last year, we had 211 students who were receiving those free meals in that Angel Fund Free category. Currently, right now, we're sitting at about 336 students. And that was expected because we knew we're eliminating some of those other things. We do believe it's still manageable at this time, but we will assess this end of November, early December to determine if we have enough Angel Funds coming in to continue that through the remainder of the school year. And then USDA regulation changes. A little bit of heartburn here and there with some of the things that are coming. But in July, Congress did pass into law some different things that are going to make changes with our free and reduced applications, our SNAP benefits and all that. Just making things a little bit maybe more difficult for some. Starting with the, I should say, the rollout timeline has not yet been determined, but SNAP has already started going into effect. There's certain things that have already taken place where I think it was sometime this month already, families are supposed to start verifying that they're working 20 hours, different things like that. We do know many families who qualified for SNAP in the past, probably will not qualify going forward, or they may choose not to sign up for SNAP benefits for various reasons. So that's going to make a difference. So those families would then have to get qualified based on their income in their application. We also have what we call community eligibility provisions. And that's we have four locations or schools within the district that we're using right now that doesn't cost the district general fund any money based on how we've bundled these schools together because anything that's not covered by the percentage factor that we have, the general fund covers that. And we've been very strategic in saying, "Hey, we know that Hawthorne, Horace Mann, Axtel, and the Learning Lab right now are really not costing any money and so we're able to give all those students in those buildings free meals." But those are all impacted by direct certification numbers. SNAP is what we use as a direct certification. And so we know some of that's going to be changing coming in the next school year. And so we'll monitor that closely. We have to make decisions, I think, by about August or April 1st in knowing what those numbers look like and what recommendations we come forward with that. And then the big thing is verification of all income-based applications. So I shared with you that we've had over 5,200 applications or so come in. Currently, we only verify 3%. If we have to verify 100%, that's a little bit of a daunting thought process, how that's going to roll out. We're looking to find out how that's going to be shared with us in different ways. And so with that, I did share with you in the spring that those 3% that we verified last year, we had 88 families we had to verify. And of those 88 families, we had only 25% that stayed in free and reduced meal benefits. So we had a 25% accuracy rate. The rest all fell off of free school or free and reduced meal benefits. I'm happy to share that we do have district representation staying informed, advocating for child nutrition programs across the country with USDA and Congress along with our other allied organizations. As part of the School Nutrition Association, I'm able to represent them at the national level and be right there with ears as close to some of the legislative things that are happening. So with that, I would like to ask that you acknowledge my report. I guess I've got a quick summary. Our meals are here, preparing students to learn. We do meet those regulations, I assure you on that. And we continue to strive to improve the quality of meals for students while remaining fiscally responsible. And so now I'd like to ask you to acknowledge the work of Child Nutrition Services.
Okay, standby. We're gonna get a motion on the table to open it up for discussion.
Move to acknowledge the report.
Second. Discussion? Yep.
Do I always look like I want to talk? No, this is excellent, excellent work. I love the fact of the cooking the meals closer to the elementary schools. I think that was just a brilliant change that you made. And when I visited some of those schools, you could tell, not only with the kids, if I happened to be there when lunch was being served, but also the bunch staff, like you said. It was great to be able to serve hotter food and more appealing food and that's just a wonderful change. And so thank you for doing that. I hope we can expand it to a few more schools. So thanks for your work on that.
I'll say that, you know, I have two kids and a husband and rarely do I make one dinner that pleases all four of us. For you to do what you've done with 15,000 lunches every day and just the amount of care that goes into how those meals are made and how they're delivered and just, you know, everything up and down and just seeing how that kitchen runs and how you've planned everything out is really, you know, nothing short of a miracle. Although I know that it takes a ton of hard work and I really appreciate that. My question for you is about the verification. So if in fact, 100% of the applications need to be verified, do you have an estimate of how many work hours or FTEs that's going to take?
Todd and I were talking about it a few weeks ago and I said, "I don't know. I think at least another full-time person plus a lot of temporary people in the beginning of the school year." I could be wrong, thinking it could be two FTEs to include because getting that information upfront and being, people don't understand what that verification means. We have to see pay stubs. We have to see your child support that's received. Other members that live within your household. We have to, if Grandma and Grandpa live there and they're receiving social security, that has to be reported. And so trying to get that communication piece out and really figuring that out, it'll be rather interesting how Congress expects us to make this happen.
Yeah, add in language barriers.
Yeah, language barriers too, yeah, and all of that. And is it, is it true that in terms of household income, if a minor child that lives in the household has a job, you have to count that income towards the household income?
Yes, it is. Any income that comes into the household, whether they contribute to the household or not.
Whether they're contributing to the household or not. Yeah, so all of this and adding in full-time employees to verify it when we're talking about paying for kids to be able to eat at school. Right? I'm getting all this right. Okay. Thank you, Gaye.
You're missing a quote page like Allison had on the last report. I have one for you from a middle schooler. "That sandwich was bussin." Don't know what that means. That means really good. So I've been getting positive feedback from girls at home saying how much they love their new middle school lunch and how it's improved for them. So you need to add that next time, some kid feedback on those. I was just in the Wellness Committee with Gaye and various others who focus on all the different things that are coming down for us locally, federally. And it's just amazing how she just laid out down-to-a-bussing schedule for getting meals in certain places. And it's almost like just as soon as you get it figured out federally, something comes trickling down to shake things up and you start all over. So I think that you gave us so much, but I just want to show a deep appreciation for how thoughtful you are in managing all these regulations. I managed an after-school snack, like SNAP program, and the regulations for that drove me nuts. So I just praise you so much for all the things to be compliant, to get ahead of the curve, to think, again, thinking 10 months ahead is really what you're doing. And that, to me, is a win in itself. And I think we should get your 99.9% on a sticker or decal. That's still something to celebrate. As far as like, how can one support those, trying to fill those things out? What's your best advice in maybe educators working with families who are struggling to get them filled out? to get them filled out? Do you have any sound advice? I know we were talking in the committee and your advice was to not go through their parent portal, but to go to a different way to fill out the form was easier. Some of those things like that, could you clarify?
Sure. So the actual application is on the district website under child nutrition. I don't even think it's really in the parent portal. We tried to link it at one time and I don't think it's there, but we need to encourage parents to go here. We've got a QR code, we've got all kinds of information we've shared, we've had signage put out. We do have the app in various languages. And again, the people that help us, it's amazing how many people, it's like, okay, we talk them through, here's some tips and tricks on how to fill out an application. You know, if you put zero income in, it's going to flag it for us when we have to ask questions. If you put in a rounded number of $50,000, it says, eh, suspicious income. So different things, I've just put together some tips for the different people within the district that are helping us complete those applications so they can kind of help ease that process as they're filling it out.
Where can we find those tips?
I'll share it with you.
Awesome.
Okay.
And then just want to give a shout out to the Angel Fund and all that they do. They just recently had their fundraiser at the Barrel House and I know that went really well. So I'm so thankful that we have community partners that work alongside you in that way to support and give us a different avenue to get that middle-income group. That's a good majority of people right now is that middle, I don't qualify, but I'm super close. So again, thank you so much for what you do and manage, it's a lot.
And I do have to say thanks to the guys from Hungry Hearts Barrel House. I mean, they are really tremendous supporters of ours.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That acknowledgement passes.
We do have, and one thing that you saw even tonight with each one of those programs is our community partners that step in and fill the gap and you'd highlighted that, Ms. Johnson, but they fill in the gap so many times in our school district, just our community partners that step up. Our final piece that we have here is a public hearing for application waivers for administrative rule by Becky Dorman.
Good evening. I am here tonight to ask for your permission to apply for waivers to administrative rules so that five of our staff members who are currently working as special education teachers can reach their certification under the Department of Ed's Special Education Alternative Certification Program. These five people, a year ago, were doing other things in our district other than teaching. So this is another example of us growing our own teachers, our own special education teachers, in fact. So the point of my public hearing is to ask for your permission and also to see if anyone has comment. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to open this up to a public hearing to see if there's anybody that would like to speak on behalf of the topic. Okay, we are now going to close the public meeting and I would ask for a motion to approve the application waivers of the administrative rule.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Or, sorry, any discussion amongst the board? Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you, Becky. Okay, I would like to now please get a motion to recess before we go into executive session. Do I have a motion?
I won't.
Second. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are going to recess.